... mean to order six thirty, please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Pray with me. Father, we thank you for this evening. We ask that you would bless everyone here tonight. Lord, we ask that you would bestow your wisdom upon us. Father, we invite your Holy Spirit in this meeting, Lord, to help us make these decisions. Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call and roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Benares?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a corner.
All right. We have a few items on our agenda tonight. They all pertain to the same master plans that we had prepared for us by Kimley Horn. We have Jameson here with us tonight, and he is going to walk us through this journey. So, Jameson, welcome, and I ask we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming. We're going to be discussing the Avon Park Master Utility Plans, the water and wastewater, and also the wastewater treatment facility plan. Yeah, I'm Jameson with Kimley Horn. I'm here with Vincent Casella and Matthew Tebow. Matthew Tebow, he's our wastewater expert, so he'll join us later. And Vincent and myself worked together at the Lakeland office, and he helped me with both of the master utility plans. So, yeah, there's a lot to cover today. I don't want to go over this too much, but we're going to give this quick background and scope of what we were doing with all the three mass, the plans. Population growth projections for the city for water and wastewater, and our methodology. Our methodology behind modeling and evaluating the different systems for us to come up with capital improvement projects. So that's the next thing is our recommended improvement projects. At the treatment plant, we did a condition assessment, and again, recommended improvements based off of the condition of the treatment plant equipment. And then as part of that project, we also looked at alternatives for the subjects receiving and the expansion of the treatment plant. That was the main goal of that project originally, was to look at what are the options to expand that plant to two million gallons per day. Right now, it's permitted for 1.5 million gallons per day, and we'll just have any discussion after that. So looking at the water and wastewater master plans, we were contracted to do the population growth projections five, 10, 20 years down the road, and to also prepare GIS maps. I mean, we updated the GIS system, which is really important, and we create maps for the city that can go out to, you know, developers or anybody else and have more detailed maps so they know what's nearby. They're not super accurate, but they are a lot better, and we checked it with some drawings and updated it throughout this project. And then we developed a list of capital improvement projects based off our analysis to meet the future flow projections of the city. Now, for the treatment plant, facility plan, it was to identify issues and efficiencies at the treatment plant, to perform that condition assessment, and to, again, determine those capital improvement projects necessary to meet the new DEP limits. There's new limits on the groundwater due to the Lake Okeechobee Basin, and this is statewide that's going on. If you're within this basin, you have to meet new limits to reduce the nutrients in the water, the nitrogen and phosphorus. So that's one of the key things of part of that project is to first meet those limits. And then to meet, if you were to expand, you know, to two million gallons, what are your options for that? So that's things we looked at as part of that project. For population growth projections, there was different things that we looked at to come up with those projections. Existing is your current flows of the water and wastewater system, but we call it infill demands. Those are the demands if a, that are within or nearby to an existing, like, water main or existing gravity sewer, but for some reason isn't connected. So that's where you get a lot of those demands are just if you're nearby to the system. And then expansion demands. We know it's important for the city to, like, for the water to expand out the northwest area there, so you can get additional demands from growth and expansion of your system. And then known future developments. As part of this project, we understood there's four known developments currently planned and moving forward, and that adds up to a good amount of flow, actually, close to 200,000 gallons, which is a large amount of flow for the city. And we calculated, we used, sorry, we used some of the water billing data to come up with some of those demands of the commercial and industrial. And we found a discrepancy, though, in the water billing data. The water billing data, let's say, added up to 1.8 million gallons per day, but the treatment plant, the water treatment plant, was metering close to 2 million gallons per day. So there was a difference of, let's say, close to 200,000 gallons per day that wasn't being, you know, metered through the billing data. So that was just something to note, and because of that, we recommend a water audit to try to understand what's going on there, because that could be some more revenue for the city. And then we use, so we use the water billing data, which wasn't as accurate, but we used it at least for the top 25 water users for commercial. And for residential, we looked at the population within the different parcels and then came up with a flow per person as part of this to estimate the residential demands. I know it's hard to see, but this is a summary of the projected water and wastewater demands. The water treatment plant actually has a large capacity, which is good. The treatment plant can handle, is permitted up to 7.5 million gallons, and we were only projecting, and right now, the plant only sees 2 million, so the water treatment plant can actually handle up to 7.5 million gallons. So that's a, you have a good amount of capacity on the water side. And at 20 years, we were projecting 3.3 million gallons, so there's still some leftover capacity there for, to handle growth.
What's the form of treatment for the water treatment plant?
That's a good question. I have to go back and see. I know we didn't focus on part of the treatment process.
The reason I ask is if you're talking about if it's reverse osmosis or some form of that, then even though you're showing a seven nominal, seven million gallons, you're still going to have to get rid of that reject water. I was wondering how that was happening and how it would affect the wastewater plant. If we could use the wastewater plant as a reject water disposal.
That's a good point. I'm not aware of any reject water. I don't believe it's an RO plant.
So it's just a?
I think it's just a traditional, I can get that information for you and confirm and make sure there's not additional wastewater coming, because to my knowledge, there's no wastewater coming from that currently. A reject. So now, on the wastewater side, so wastewater is a little bit different. You're permitted for 1.5 million gallons per day, and you see about half of that right now. In 20 years, we are expecting to exceed that permitted capacity. It is closer to, let's say, the 12 or 13-year mark based off of these flow projections. And we were using the higher growth rates for this city and for this master plan, because when we looked at those known developments, getting 200,000 gallons potentially, I mean, that's, that's a lot more than any projected growth rate, because right now, the flows are 840,000 gallons per day. So if you're getting 200,000 from these known developments, that's a high growth rate, you know, high, high growth rate. So we wanted to be conservative and use that high growth rate for this master plan. Any questions on that? I mean, here was the, a map, and you could see better in the draft reports, but this was a map showing where those existing areas were, where those infill areas were, and where the known developments in red, the four known developments, and then any expansion areas, which the water side, a lot of the expansion was to the northwest, which we know was important for the city to want to expand that area. Yeah, I'm going to hand it over to Vincent to talk about some of our standards for the water and wastewater modeling and how he came up with some of the improvements on the water.
So, hello, everyone. My name is Vincent, and I worked really closely with Jameson and a couple other people from the firm in modeling the system. And when you're modeling the system, you know, you need to have criteria to kind of evaluate against. So we kind of decided on, you know, a lot of different criteria that's widely accepted in the state and widely used. And on the first side is water. We wanted a minimum system pressure during fire flow of 20 PSI. So basically, you just don't want super low pressure, because with low pressure comes bacteria growth, right? So, but you also don't want super high pressure, and that's where that maximum system pressure of 90 is coming from. Because if things are too slow, bacteria can grow. If things are too, the pressure's too high, then things can break.
I got to simply say that 90 PSI, I don't think that's sustainable.
Yeah, no, it's not sustainable.
If you're going past 70, 75, you're going to be really lucky if you're not busting stuff up.
Exactly. And that's kind of where that 45 to 70 down there came from. That's where we wanted our average pressure to land somewhere within. And in the draft report, you'll kind of see, it was usually, the average pressure in the system was usually around 50, until demands got really high. And then at the very bottom, there's fire flow demand. In the city code, they quote having 600 GPM as the residential hydrants, like, requirement. So around your houses. And for commercial slash industrial hydrants, you need to hit around 1250 GPM to be up to code. And I use that in the analysis in saying, you know, how many we're passing and failing. And then for the wastewater hydraulic standards, the really important one that we saw made the most changes was the force main velocities. So you can't go too slow through a force main, because things will settle, and you'll get buildup inside of your force mains, and you'll have to clean them quite often. And then you can't go too fast, because if it's going too fast, things can break again. So around seven to eight is really where people usually cap that one off. So I'm going to go to the next slide here, and we're going to start just the water improvements. There's 17 of these, so bear with me, and I'll try to go pretty quickly through them. But basically, I evaluated them against the constraints that we just talked about. So the first one, I know it's going to be hard to see. Those are some pretty big transmission lines out to the west, and these are kind of leading up to the Avon Park Lakes area. Through discussion with, you know, the Public Works Director, we knew that growth out in that direction was, was wanted. This water main, you know, we are basically saying that, you know, have this be a present-day improvement. It's not totally necessary until the five-year scenario. With the five-year demands, you start getting some really bad pressure issues out towards Avon Park Lakes. But, you know, since it was on the Public Works Director's radar that they, you know, we want growth out in that direction, this is a great way to encourage development, having that utility out there. So, and obviously, it's very long, so, you know, getting started on it sooner rather than later is probably not a terrible idea. And then this next project kind of ties in with that. So this is the Avon Park Lakes area. With Avon Park Lakes, there were some issues, I think, in planning, where there's a lot of two-inch and four-inch water main out there. And with that comes an issue where you can't build any fire hydrants, because you can't get fire flow to be viable through a two-inch or four-inch line. So if you kind of look at this picture, the light blue lines are going to be just existing water mains, not calling out a size, really. But anything in color is going to be color-coded, and you'll see that actually in the report. Of, so like, green is a six-inch. So you can see all that six-inch planned out there through this improvement. And you can see a blue line up to the north side, and I'm sorry, I wish we could see it a little bit clearer. But that would be a looping line, which would help with if there is a fire hydrant flowing in the Avon Park Lakes area. There's water coming from the north and the south to make sure that there's adequate fire flow and adequate protection for everybody up there. And, and this is a lot of spread-out pipes, so it'd be some miscellaneous projects, but we, we thought it would be a really great one to, to be up top towards the priority list.
Vincent, real quick, what percentage of the residents in Avon Park Lakes would that have completed? Is that all, is that everyone that lives in?
Yes. Yeah, well, so this doesn't expand new water mains to many people, because there's actually water mains, like, a lot of water mains out there. But what this is going to allow for is for pretty much everyone to have fire protection.
I see.
Yeah.
Are you talking about, when you say water main, are you talking about mains inside of subdivisions? Or are you talking about city mains? I mean, because if they're inside subdivision, doesn't mean we own and maintain them.
Right.
And that's really their responsibility for putting in the two-inch or four-inch pipe. But city mains, I would agree, don't need to be.
Right. No, no, I, I agree with you. I know that the Avon Park Lakes area was potential to be integrated into your guys' system eventually, and having it, you know, actually adequate for your guys' code was a big part of that. But as for, you know, if it's city or is, is it, you know, belonging to private?
These are our city mains. As part of this master plan, we evaluated, I mean, these mains shown are city water mains. Okay.
Okay. The next project is Lake Damon. So this is a pretty important one. Up towards the left here, where that red box is kind of cut off, is a water main that's coming from Sun Pure Road up by New Core. Right now, all of that water in that box is actually coming from the south, from way south of Lake Damon, and there's one connection to your system. So if that one connection breaks, no one north of that connection has any water whatsoever, and there's also no fire hydrants up there. There, there's like a couple, but not an adequate amount. So this, you, you see a lot of green in there. It's a lot of upsizing to six-inch, and the most important part is that loop up to the top left.
Why is it the best expenditure of money to upsize pipes that are underground rather than put in a repump station or a satellite water, water plant?
Well, no matter how much pressure you put into some of these pipes, if you're trying to hit, say, there's a restaurant up there, if you're trying to hit 1,250 gallons per minute, you can, you can't get that amount of flow through a four-inch pipe without tons of friction loss, where it wouldn't really totally be viable to, to just repump the pressure up. So, so that's why six-inch is really that sweet spot for hitting that much flow with, you know, in an efficient manner.
It is also mentioned in the code for if you're going to put a fire hydrant on a main, it's going to be at least six-inch minimum.
Well, I agree. It's not practical to put it on a four-inch pipe.
Right. Project four is a really quick, easy one. Over there on Cornell Street, there's a spot where it would be perfect to just connect two water mains, and both, it, it's just not there. There's just nothing there. And I, and I had checked with Mike Marks with the city, and he was like, yeah, there's, there's really no pipe there. So what this would do is it connects the water north of Cornell Street and south of Cornell Street, and allowing for, because it's down to the southeast is, I think, a golf course, and it, it would help a lot with air pressure, because we're getting some, some low pressure out of it. Again, is a problem because of bacteria growth. So this would be a great loop and, you know, pretty cost-effective and a pretty short amount of pipe. US-27 North is a eight-inch water main, which is adequate today. But there is a ton of restaurants off of it and in commercial buildings. And then to the south is a very large residential area near Valerie Boulevard. And we're not, one, we do not have much fire flow out there. There's not that many fire hydrants. So if we wanted them to work correctly, we would need to upsize this eight-inch segment to 12-inch. And again, this is towards the south end of the city, if you can't tell. But it would, it would, it's also sized to serve everyone in Valerie, by the Valerie Boulevard area for 20 years. It, it's, it's oversized today to eventually be good for 20 years from now.
Same question, I guess. Rather, I mean, it could have been really expensive to upgrade pipe along.
Right, of course, of course.
I mean, have you guys considered the possibility of a satellite water plant out to the south or a repump station? An eight-inch would be sufficient to fill a repump station, and then that can create pressures, or you could push everything from the high-service pumps out there consisting of water plant.
Right. Well, so later on, we recommend upgrades at the plants you guys currently have, but we did not look at the possibility of a new satellite pump station down to the south. Because you guys have the infrastructure there. With these upgrades at your plants not being super extensive, while, you know, you have tons of transmission infrastructure in right now. There's so many 12-inch lines, like, all over the city, and then they'll just cut down to eight. And it's just like, if this one segment was still 12, like, right here, it creates really good water pressure down to the south that currently we just, in 20 years, you just wouldn't have without upsizing to a bigger size. But...
Jerry, we can't look into that, adding, like you said, a repump station or some booster pump station. Instead of upsizing that, I mean, we could look into that. I mean, that's just more maintenance and operation costs as well.
Obviously, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, to the south, it would seem to me, not as opposed to the southwest, it would seem to me like we're not going to go that far. A repump station would take care of the whole area.
Sure. Yeah, we can definitely, we'll, we'll take a look at that and see.
Which will cost you.
Right. We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Thanks.
State Road 64. So right now, currently, fire hydrants out in this area are having some difficulty meeting code. And, you know, we're just concerned that it could cause issues down the line. So we're recommending an upsize of this water main, because it's a six-inch and it's a long stretch of six-inch. And through that much six-inch pipe, you get a lot of friction loss and a lot of pressure loss, where these fire hydrants aren't getting to, not even very close to 600 GPM, more like 300, which is not adequate for city code. Project seven, South Florida State College. There's a long six-inch running through the whole college. You're able to hit some of those 600 GPM. However, these are not residential hydrants. There are a lot of commercial hydrants that need 1250. So six-inch just isn't totally adequate to meet that flow. So we're recommending upsizing to eight-inch. So here's that Valerie Boulevard area. All that pipe in there is about four-inch or three-inch. So you can see a lot of green. That's upsizing to six-inch. That's a residential area with almost no fire hydrants currently that we had from GIS data from the city and Fire Marshal. So obviously, upsizing to six-inch would help a lot with being able to actually build fire hydrants out there. Project nine, Deer Lake. There's some houses up by Deer Lake, and there's, they have no fire protection as well. And we were getting a lot of projected demand in that area in the future. So with Two Birds One Stone, we figured this could be an idea for a project where there is, you know, adequate looping, so you can see how it would tie into itself again to the, to the west for that future demand, but also put the infrastructure out there for some more fire hydrants. Project 10 is the Crystal Lake Club pressure valve. So right now, you guys have a treatment plant at Crystal Lake Club. And they, it, it does not run as often as they would like it to, because there's adequate water and pressure coming from your other two plants. So to kind of remedy that, it would be a valve down where it connects to the rest of your guys' system that doesn't allow water to come in from the other plants until that demand is needed there. So say a fire hydrant turns on at Crystal Lake Club, right? Then it's going to quickly, the pressure's going to fall, right? Because all that demand's coming out. So if that pressure falls, this valve can sense that and open up to get water from the rest of your guys' system. And you want that station, that, that pumping plant to run more, because you want the water to continue to leave the plant. You want better water quality. If it sits there for too long, there's, there's issues with bacteria and whatnot. So it, and it's further automation. You don't have to have someone always watching. You don't have a million operators, right? No one does. Who can watch that kind of thing and open a, a manual valve whenever he feels like it, he or she feels like it? So this is more automation to, to help out with that. This is pretty much the biggest project, and it's kind, it's not really one project. It's a miscellaneous list of projects. But this map is pretty important. So it's, all those little red dots are your fire hydrants. And again, sorry, hard to see, I understand. All those little red dots are fire hydrants. All of that blue is parcels that are within 100 feet of a water main, but are not within 400 feet of a fire hydrant, right? So these are all the places that there could be fire hydrants, but there are none, right? And, and, and that's a, a great thing that we have that, because now you can kind of see, hey, all these areas are of concern for fire protection. So it would not be done overnight, right? That's huge. That's a huge area. But just keeping in mind safety and, and fire protection, I think this is a great project. So now we're looking at things that kind of arose through the five-year demand. So once we projected out all these populations and where they're going to be coming in, there's a demand associated with them. And then I ran, we ran that through the model, and we saw, okay, now pressures are falling below that, that criteria we set. So down towards that Valerie Boulevard area, it's not looped, right? So this is just a water main looping that Valerie Boulevard Lakes area up into the system again. And, and looping allows for higher pressures when there's a lot of demand, because before, there's only one place you can get water from. But now you have two, and it can come from both directions. And it's also redundancy, right? If one of those breaks, the loop can help out. There was just too much demand for the pumps to keep up with at the plants, so we modeled in an additional pump at Glenwood Avenue. And, and, you know, the Glenwood, Glenwood is almost like the second station compared to Bell Street. Bell Street's the biggest. So once we hit this five-year demand, we, we realized that the pumps that we currently had on were not meeting the demand anymore. And once you installed the extra pump, pressure issues just went away. So now, not too many in five-year. Ten-year will be kind of the same. Ten-year would be the upsizing of two smaller pumps. So at Bell Street, we have four pumps currently. Two very large, large pumps, I think they, I believe they're 75 horsepower, and two smaller pumps that are 40 horsepower. You need to always have a redundant pump at these pumping stations. So to remedy, hey, we need another pump on, we would upsize two of them. So now you have four good pumps with only three of them on. But you always need that redundancy. I believe it's an FDIP requirement. And then the 20-year improvements. Right outside of the Glenwood plant, there is a six-inch line on Willhite Street that then turns north and connects to Main Street. And Main Street, we were finding some, some pressure issues. And this pipe, this specific pipe, is where a lot of the water is getting to Main Street. So since there's a lot of flow coming out of the sta, out of the pumping station, and this one six-inch is one of the main feeders for Main Street, we were getting a ton of friction loss through that. And when you lose, when you have a lot of friction loss, you lose a lot of pressure. So upsizing to eight-inch helped remedy all of that pressure loss and allowed us to, to keep the pressures high on Main Street. And then this one, this is a picture, the, the picture below is from the model. And this is going to be an upsize of a really small length of pipe. Right outside of Glenwood, this must have been sized a long time ago, but there is a six-inch that connects everything together. And so we're constraining ourselves right at the beginning of Glenwood Avenue. So upsizing that green pipe to just, to a 12-inch, like the other discharge pipe, there's two discharge pipes, which is that, those pipes in purple. Upsizing that green pipe to a 12-inch helped not constrain you guys right at the front of the plant and, and really help out with pressures. And then I believe this is the final one, so thank you for bearing with me. But this pink line in that bottom picture is a 16-inch, and at this point, there's so much demand on the system, and it's grown by, you know, a million gallons a day. So now we have those three pumps on at this station like we talked about at Bell Street. That's a lot of flow going through 16, it's a big pipe, 16-inch, but the amount of flow going through that now calls for a larger pipe. So this is a discharge piping upgrade to a 20-inch to get rid of a lot of that, a lot of that pressure loss. And, and, you know, it, it might sound kind of 16 versus 20, but... But you know, that radius is squared, right? So it makes a really big difference and, and, and it causes, um, you know, way less pressure loss. And I believe that would be all of the water improvements and Jameson's gonna retake over for the wastewater.
Any questions on the water side of things before moving on to like the wastewater master utility plan improvements?
I got one, Jameson. How confident are you that you identified all the lines in the ground and what sizes?
Confident in identifying like the existing system?
Right.
Um, not a hundred percent confident on all the sizes. We, we did the best that we can, you know, with the information and coordinate with, you know, city staff.
I asked Rick the same thing earlier. He answered the same way, so.
Yeah, well, when, when we, we made the maps for the city, um, and, and, and Mike Martz, he did a great job and, and Matthew did a great job too. They were able to go around and identify so many pipes and, and I put every single one into the computer. And we still had a lot of unknown pipe, um, where no one could figure it out and it's, it wasn't viable to figure out every pipe. So those are also shown in the master plan, um, as red. I put them in there. Um, so we have a good, a good amount of the system where we still don't know, but at least we know there's a pipe there.
A lot more reviews.
Right. And, and you guys can have our GIS files and all that too, so that you, you know, you can improve upon it, you know, further in the future.
Just one other question on the way into this, but I was at, you know, at that meeting we had some time ago, which was really a meeting. You brought it up here, but I think it was in a ten year plan at Glenwood to up it to a twelve. Because you had some low pressure on Main Street and some of them were in the hydrants. And not in the business, but I'm looking at hydrants fighting fires on bigger buildings on Main Street. That would be a ten year plan or did you find out where the flow was? I know that you and Michael Martz and somebody else were gonna work on that and see if you could identify why there was low flow. But to me, that's a concern, low flow on Main Street when that's where big buildings are more than one story and fighting fires, so.
So on Main Street, there was originally too with, uh, coordinating with Chief Marcy, uh, the flows were actually worse than what they are now. The, the city ended up finding like a closed valve or something like that. And, uh, the, the fire flows actually, they are lower than what we are expecting in the model. The model showed that the fire flows or the pressure should be better on Main Street. And didn't, we didn't end up finding out what's going on with that. Uh, there could be a closed valve. There's old asbestos cement piping, you know, that, we don't know that the issue is actually unknown. But we had to move forward and do the analysis based off of those lower pressures on Main Street. However, Main Street, those fire flows, we're still being able to achieve the, the code, the twelve hundred fifty gallons per minute. So they were lower on Main Street, but they were still meeting the code on, on Main Street.
Do they still allow you to leave semen asbestos pipe in the ground and replace it with something else or do they require you to package it up and send it off to a Class A landfill?
Good question.
Yeah, it depends if it's, it's a tribal or non-tribal. If it, if it pulls apart your hands and maybe you remove it and most of the pipe is still in a form where it doesn't break apart. That's a DEP will let you abandon in place.
They used to allow you, but it's tribal to leave it in the ground and cover it. Uh, where they haven't removed it because of extreme cost of doing that. I'm just concerned about some of the pipes, especially the four inch. But that was a very popular semen asbestos size.
Yeah, semen we usually recommend is a global fill to, to put in there. So you, you fill it too when you're done abandoning place. Or you can do a pipe rescue where you actually break the pipe over right there as long as you have to serve a DEP and it's still allowing to be placed. Cause it's, it's costly and we can't.
More, more importantly, is there a grant available for such a terrible hazard?
You and every city. I don't know if that's a good idea. Well, I mean, everyone thought it was a good idea back then.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you look bad.
That was very good, Jerry.
I'll move on to the wastewater, uh, present day improvements. And these first, uh, two improvements, I coordinated with the city and they're really not even focused on like capacity or anything. They were more on the condition and just through coordination, uh, with the city staff. So this one, uh, was based off of the condition was poor at this lift station. So it's including rehabbing a lift station. Uh, second one was, these are at three lift stations that receive flow from a lot of different areas. And you're actually required to have a backup generator or a standby like bypassing pump. So if something happened, it's not gonna overflow because you have, you have other lift stations, a lot of other pump stations pumping to, um, these three lift stations here.
But they allow you to have a portable generator, do they not?
Portable generator.
Yeah, cause they, they require to have a generator outlet, but I don't know, did you know they changed it to require a stand, a.
I'd have to verify, but my understanding was that you, it should have a generator there.
They've always required it for tertiary, um, but not for duplex. It's my recollection.
That was my question.
Okay. Well, I, I'll look, I'll look into that, verify that, confirm that these would be needed and not just an outlet. Well, I know coordinating with city staff that they prefer to have generators here, you know, if something were to happen.
Yeah, but that's a lot of generators. They have to go and maintain it because they all have to be stored in a storage room and everything else.
Right, for sure. Uh, let's see. So, uh, improvement number two, uh, this was, and this has been important through conversation with, uh, Rick Reed, city staff. This is Lake Tulane, the main master station right next, uh, that's like right on, you know, the lake. So this was important to relocate that nearby to the south. I know there's a development going on to the south, Twin Lakes. And we're hoping that maybe the city can not negotiate with them to get a corner piece of their property. So they can gravity flow to a new master station that's sized appropriately, has larger pump station, you know, larger pumps and get off of that lake. Um, cause, so that's the first issue. It's on the lake. And the second thing is it's actually just barely keeping up and handling the flows that's coming to it. There's a lot of flow going to this master station.
As I understand, a lot of the new core flows actually going through this.
Correct. Yeah, new core flow does route to this flow here. All right. I know Vincent mentioned it a little bit about, we looked at the flow through the pipes. If the flow through the pipes were too low, sediment could build up. So when we call it pigging, that's pretty much cleaning the pipe. So you're, you're cleaning that sediment that's built up. So that was this improvement and, uh, this fourth improvement as well. So that's what it's related to.
Do we know that it's actually, um, silted up?
We do not know. I, I'm not sure how you would verify that, but we just know when we're running the model, you're getting lower velocities. So we're assuming that there's sediment buildup, but these would be lower priority. You know, if the stations are still doing okay right now, you know, it's not affecting the pumps as we see. Um, improvement number five was upsizing a portion of the force main. Uh, there's two force mains. You don't see it north of the blue line that's shown there. Uh, but there's two six inch force mains that combine. And they're, right now they're combining into a same size force main. Typically, when you have two force mains that connect, you do a size up. So it really helps the two upstream, uh, which is Walmart up there and I think South Lake License is called. But, but those two, uh, yeah, upsize to ten inch and then upsize the downstream, uh, gravity sewer as well. Right now currently it's, um, exceeding the capacity of the gravity main. I, I mean, there's no overflows happening now, but through our calculations, that pipe is exceeding capacity. So we were upsizing the eight inch, um, to fifteen and then upsizing the twelve inch as well. And twelve inch is okay now, but we were including it as a present day improvement now because you're in the same area. What, you might as well upsize it now instead of wait five years and do a small portion. So we grouped that together as part of this project. So now we looked at the five, we added the five year demands, you know, more demands on the system. And then that caused this lift station six to, uh, be upgraded. That caused this, the flow that ultimately leads to another master station, uh, Cummings, uh, to upsize the gravity sewer system. And here's where Tulane and, oh, sorry, that master station I was just talking about, uh, Tulane and Cummings. They both have force mains that, uh, pump, pump to Public Works. If you know where Public Works is at. They both pumped to that station right now. And the force mains are kind of like parallel to each other a lot of the way. So this project included upsizing that force main and also combining the two flows together. So you have one pipe you only have to maintain and operate. And also bypass lift station three, which is that Public Works. Instead of having to repump it, I know it was important for Rick Reed to go directly to, uh, there's a sixteen inch force main that's sized appropriately. Uh, to connect into that so that you're not repumping that flow. Now the ten year demands, uh, this was at Walmart. The flows just kept increasing on the north. And near New, New Core, which added more flows to, uh, Walmart. So this was adding a third pump to keep up with those demands.
So is it sized, make it a triplex station?
It is actually, and that's why we mentioned adding a third pump because there's already, uh, it's already a spot for a third pump there and piping there. So that's why we came up with that recommendation. Now lift station eight, uh, looking at just upsizing the, the, the pumps on that one. And then, uh, upsizing a, a good amount, yeah, a large amount of that gravity sewer that goes to the master station Cummings. So those are again, the two master stations and the flows just increased so much to Cummings to upsize the gravity sewer. Then twenty year demands, uh, upsizing the, the pumps to meet the new twenty year demands. Same thing here at another lift station as well. And then this is at Walmart, the Walmart's force main, cause Walmart continued to get more and more flow. And at the twenty year demands, instead of upsizing the pump, the velocities in that pipe started getting so high. Where we recommended it that that force main size be upsized to ten inch. Which reduces the flow and velocity through the pipe, but also helps the pumps discharge more. And then this was upsizing the four inch force main to a six inch force main for same reasons. To reduce the velocities and, and flow and also help the pumps discharge more. Cause previously we were already showing this lift, lift station needed to upsize the pumps. But you can only upsize it so much and to reduce the velocities through that pipe. And this might be the last one, but upsizing the gravity sewer that goes to Lake Tulane. This isn't the whole run, but this is most, most of the gravity sewer run to Lake Tulane. And this was a summary of the capital improvements that we came up with. And, uh, keep in mind, I know that the numbers are large, especially on the water, present day. And a lot of those improvements though are for the future and for extensions. Some of those projects improvements could get pushed further closer to the five year, you know, improve, you know, marks. And a lot of it's fire flow related. So it's up to the city, you know, how fast you wanna, uh, provide or improve your fire flow protection. All right, now, uh, so that's it with the master utility plans. Any questions before we move on to the treatment plant? So a big part of why the treatment plant, facility plan came about, this project came about, was the new limits. The new nutrient limits because of the Lake Okachobee basin that I mentioned previously. Uh, basically the nitrogen limit was close to ten milligrams per liter and now it's three milligrams per liter. It's pretty much, you have to take your treatment plant, almost go to advanced wastewater treatment to do it. And a lot of improvements are needed to meet those new limits. It's difficult to see, but we did the condition assessment as part of this project. And like Rick said too, um, you know, he's definitely would prefer if we almost like walk the plan and go over these and show you. But keep in mind, the plant was constructed back in like nineteen eighties and a lot of the equipment is still original. So a lot of the condition was, you know, fair to poor condition. And, uh, starting off at the preliminary treatment, the headworks, that's the screen, that's removing the debris and rags. We know that project's actually underway right now. That's under construction. So we know that. Then you move on to secondary treatment, which is there's a ditch, which structurally is, still looked in pretty good condition. Uh, there's some surface rotors that were in fair to poor condition, uh, that we recommended to be replaced. And the clarifiers, that's something else that is in poor condition. I know Rick Reed right now is looking to get those fixed and repaired, um, as we speak. And then there is a major pump station at the treatment plant that pumps the, the sludge. And it's really important to the treatment plant process. And it's almost like it was built like the plant was up north because the pump station's actually below ground. And it's really prone to flooding and has flooded and failed in the, in the past. So coordinating with city staff, it was important to include this as a recommendation to bring that pump station above ground.
So you say pump the sludge, you refer to?
The waste activated sludge and return activated sludge.
So it's, it's the, uh, the waste activated sludge.
So it's after the ditches, yeah, I mean, the sludge from that, you know, comes to, or actually, sorry, the sludge from the holding tank.
To the digester.
Correct. Yeah. So the, or sorry, my bad. Uh, the, the waste activated sludge gets pumped from that station to the sludge holding tank. And then it also returns that sludge, the RAS, the return. It pumps the return sludge, the activated sludge as part of the process, the microorganisms.
That, that's hypercritical, the, the RAS pump, but the, um, but your, the, the wasted sludge.
Correct.
That's not as, as critical unless it's, uh, I mean, I'm not, unless I'm missing something. That's something that could actually run over twenty-four hours and then.
Right. Yeah, they, it could do that. And, but this station, it actually, it's, the RAS pumps are the WAS pumps. It's the same pump station, sorry. And they just like switch a valve and then pump the waste activated sludge, you know, to the holding tanks. When, when they get the time. Yeah, ninety percent of the time it's, it's returning the sludge to the treatment plant. Uh, big, one thing I wanted to mention was the sludge holding tank. Currently it's in fair condition and we know it's, it's undersized for the amount of solids that come in and septage. So we were recommending the, a larger sludge holding tank. And just think about it, um, the larger volume you have, the, the solids actually, they, they start starving themselves. And they start eating themselves almost. And it actually reduces the amount of solids. So it's really important for sludge holding and digesters to have a large volume. So for that to happen and cause hauling costs are really expensive. So right now, the time that the solids sit in the tank is only a day. And typically is designed for ten to fifteen days for the solids to sit in the tank. So right now it's only a day and they don't have that much flexibility. The operators don't have that much flexibility. So that's why we recommend a, a large sludge holding tank.
I guess I don't understand. Uh, they, they haul cake, right? And they don't, they, cause they have the belt, belt press.
Yes. So it goes to the sludge holding tank and then it pumps to the, the, the screw press that they have there. And then the screw press makes that cake that gets hauled off. But if you have less solids going to that screw press, you're ultimately hauling less. So it's, it's called volatile solids destruction that can happen in that tank. And it could be up to thirty, thirty to forty percent that you can reduce if you have enough holding time. Uh, that was a big thing in that septic is receiving. I want to hit on, uh, that's very important, you know, to the city and you get good revenue from it. But those septic receiving units are in poor condition. So it's recommended that they be replaced. And we also looked at different alternatives as part of this project. One thing I know, I, I wanted to mention is the rate of what the city's charging is like six cents, some, somewhere in that range. Now others charge up to like, say fourteen cents, almost double. So I, I would recommend looking into those rates and looking to charge more. I mean, it's good revenue now, but you can actually make more money and evaluate those rates. Uh, generator's important because the current generator at the treatment plant, um, can't gen, can't provide backup power for the whole plant. It can only power a small portion. So putting in a larger generator is important. And then the office building, the office building is in the best condition. And so it's recommended to, uh, replace the office building along with new lab equipment. And then this was a summary of the improvements that I mentioned and the planning timeframe and the opinion of problem. So I mentioned is, uh, we also looked at septic. So I mentioned is, uh, we also looked at septicage receiving, uh, alternatives, which the first alternative is just pretty much up, uh, replacing the septicage receiving unit that's out there. Alternative two is replacing the septicage receiving unit, but also adding in grease removal, grit removal. With septicage receiving, there's a lot of grit, grease and grit. And if you've ever been to the site, they have grit that just mounds up, you know, daily. So you have city staff and operators daily just working on that. So when we coordinate with the staff, they really would like to include that grease and grit removal, especially the grit removal, but, but grease als- also, there's a lot of it in the septicage and affects your downstream, uh, you know, equipment as well. And then, so alternative three, it was everything but the grease removal. By note, coordinating with the operators, they strongly would recommend alternative two.
So obviously you can't control the amount of grit that flows into your system.
Right.
You can control how you get rid of that. So is this just simply an automated system to take care of it?
Yes, so like, like right now too, at the treatment plant, uh, I mean, it's a, you're putting in a piece of equipment to get rid of that's automated, that gets rid of the, the grit. And a big thing we mentioned on there was process control as well, cause right now the, the septic haulers show up and, you know, somebody kinda has to watch them, you know, hook up and make sure they're doing everything properly. And if you have some process controls in place, that helps limit how much staff, you know, how many hours the city staff is overseeing that pro, that, that process.
But the actual savings to the city would just be whatever equipment it takes to remove that grit.
Correct.
Whatever man hours it takes to remove that grit.
Right.
Oh, I mean, you can get a lot more about true efficiency too.
I see.
Yeah, it's gonna have, it's mechanic, it's, it's on demand, it's mechanical equipment, mechanical removal, I mean, it's really the.
Right.
Um, Sarasota County, I mean, this, this is kind of, it's not top of the line, but it protects downstream equipment. So a lot of the, the wear and tear is prevented by getting the grit, the grease, all that out of it, especially when you have advanced treatment. It's really more critical to have a, a clean grid for a little more. Uh, right now you don't have that advantage, but I'll talk about that.
Okay. And the grit, right, you're getting the grit out of the tanks, as you know, some of these projects, you're, you're, you're having to pay later to haul off that grit from the tanks and it affects the treatment process.
What's the level in adequacy of the generator at the wastewater plant? I mean, is it okay to run in an emergency circumstance to keep the plant, operate the bugs alive and all that stuff?
Um, if I remember right, it's, it's only sized enough to handle, let's say, half of that treatment plant.
So if you have full capacity, it's not gonna go forward.
Right.
If it seemed to me like that would be, you want that generation fixed before you do the lift stations, cause you don't wanna send a sewage to a plant that's not operating from that.
Right, no, for sure, that, that's definitely high priority to do the generator. We have that happening, you know, within a year, that's what we would recommend, you know, in the timeframe. So then the big thing that I'm gonna have Matt cover are, is looking at those expansion alternatives, uh, at the treatment plant.
Kinda dark here. So, uh, Matt Tevo, I've been working with Jameson about eight years, we've been partnering together for about three or four. Um, New Core, uh, Headworks Analysis, um, uh, City of Frostproof, Lakeland, we, we partner together a lot and, um, thanks for having us here, I really appreciate it, I've been an opportunity, like my job, like wastewater treatment and stuff like that. And, um, a lot of this is, a lot of the driver is the nutrient removal, where the state is just more and more, they're taking, they're really taking their time, the state, instead of just, um, at a gentleman, he's, he's really senior, different firm I used to work for and he was just comparing other states where they just do a blanket nutrient number. Doesn't matter where you're discharging, you know, what you're doing, it's just like, do three milligrams per liter and states, Florida didn't do that. They took a lot, I mean, twenty years to, to, to put together the TMDLs, then the BMAP and like, we're finally seeing that fruition and you guys are in that Lake Okeechobee BMAP, where they're coming and they're giving you nutrient limits to protect Lake Okeechobee. And it's backed up, I'm not a water resources engineer, I kinda flip through and kinda fall asleep, but there's just a lot of data, a lot of environmental scientists, a lot of data collection and the state is, uh, you know, they're, they're pro business, they're, they're pro, you know, they, you know, doesn't matter who's, who's in office, but they, you know, our economy and stuff like that, so when they give these limits, it's not a, it's not a hammer, it's a, hey, we wanna protect for the long, long term. And a lot of the, all these phase one improvements are to get that advanced nutrient removal through nitrogen and phosphorus. So what I'm gonna present, we have, we have four alternatives. We, we reviewed internally dozens of alternatives, there's a lot of technologies, there's a lot of ways to do it, but what we really considered, what, what came down to it is, you know, what's, what do you have now and then what do your, what do your neighbors have, you know, what are your neighbors doing? You know, all the way from Sarasota County is doing an eighteen MGD, two hundred fifty million state of the art MBR. You know, doesn't, you know, you know, it's not, it's not here, but we also considered MBR. There's a lot of places on both coasts, a lot of here where MBR, we're gonna talk about that. There's a lot of other places that this first option is just, you know, what's tried and true, you know, fifty, sixty year old technology, it's not always a negative thing, it's also, you know, it's, it's important, we talked at Lake Placid and they very clearly don't want any new technology, they know who they are, they wanna stay with technology that's a hundred years old and then that's okay, I mean, that's, I mean, that, that can be supported, so it's really, this presentation, we have a recommendation, there's really a discussion at the end and it's really kind of direction that, you know, every, you know, all the stakeholders want, wanna go.
Sure.
So with that, I'm gonna talk about alternative one. Alternative one is sort of the, what it is, it's, it's the maintained current technology. You have a, a lakeside system, um, very reliable, many hu- hundreds of installations throughout America, many, many in Florida. Uh, Lake Wales is one of our, our clients, one of our, I'd say friends, you know, over there, we've been working with Lake Wales for a very long time. Um, they won the Phelps Award, they have a lakeside oxidation ditch that can get nutrient removal, so I mean, it's a technology that works. Um, that being said, there's some constraints with your lakeside system, the, the tank depths are, are pretty shallow, you know, twelve feet, so you're really kinda limited with that and that's just how it was designed in the eighties. Jameson, I don't know the original engineers, but it kinda looks like a plant from up north with stuff being buried and it's not really kind of a Florida plant as we typically see, which is one of those constraints. And the biggest constraints is building new process tankage to grow our bugs, just more room for them to grow for the nutrient removal process. And on top of that is, uh, uh, filters to, to filter the, filter the wastewater to get that advanced treatment and then the RAS, WAS, the, the sludge pump station James was talking about, that's consistent with that, we wanna bring that above grade, it's flooding and also some of those improvements. And then the sludge holding tank, um, there's a lot of benefits with that, the operators are really constrained, um, James was talking about, I'm talking a little more, is with that one date, it's just tight, they don't have a lot of control with that. And the operators can make do, I mean, all of them do, but by giving them just more flexibility to get the volatile solids destruction, you can get, you know, thirty, twenty, thirty, forty percent and that's hauling cost, that's solids that turn the carbon dioxide, letting those microorganisms do, do the work for you. So we feel there's, there's a lot of benefits with that sludge holding tank. So this alternative one is, um, upgrades to your aeration system, um, additional process tankage, um, and then filtration. Alternative number two is complete, kinda almost a complete opposite. And then we're gonna have three and four, this kind of little bit of middle ground. This is the one where looking at an MBR, a membrane technology, MBR is kind of a, I don't really like, it's not a bioreactor, it's a membrane filter. What it does is the normal treatment process that's over a hundred years old, microorganisms eat the food, then we have a clarifier settling tank, you just let them settle down and what you settle down, you bring those bugs back to the beginning of the plant. What an MBR does is it takes that settling out of it, you just have a filter and so you, you filter all that, so you filter basically all your bugs and return them. The biggest benefit of having a filter there and not settling is you could have double, um, a little bit more than double the amount of bugs and microorganisms in your tankage. So by using the same tankage and you double the amount of bugs, you can almost double the treatment capacity of your, of your ditches. So it's, it's not only additional bugs to, to remove the nutrients, it also gives you significantly more capacity than you need as an option to the phased approach. And then we reuse your clarifiers and we put the membranes in your clarifiers. The other benefit of that is you don't have filters now, the membranes are not only your, your, they replace your clarifiers, you save the money on that, but you also save the money on not putting filters in. Um, so you're like, hey man, that's great, let's, let's do, you know, what's the discussion? Well, it's not double the energy, but it's more energy. I mean, you're gonna spend more money because the way we clean those membranes is just like a fish tank with diffused air, it's just, it's just going on those membranes. And it's also too, there's a lot of places where Lake Placid almost told me to get out of town, that kinda joke, um, but no, but it was good, we got a good discussion is, is, you know, the staff there, this newfangled technology, you know, with these membranes and the cleaning cycles and it is, it's an additional layer of automation, it's, it's, and it's also you're, you're committed, like, once you make that decision, that's your process until you wanna spend, you know, a lot more money to convert it and you're really bought into that. So you're like, okay, unsold it. But then the other advantages is if you have advanced treatment, you know, I'm not, we're not proposing direct portable reuse or indirect portable reuse, but as regulations get tighter and tighter, more advanced, you know, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, that membrane is the best treatment technology you have right now. If you need further treatment or even more stringent treatment, you're at that membrane. Where your current technology, you would need even a tighter filter right there. We don't see those regu, we, we see hints of that regulation and I can talk more if you guys want, but like Crypto and Giardia, the state just records that data, they record in that data for about twenty years. And the cloth filters, they, they meet the criteria, but it's kinda just barely and membranes are significantly better. So I don't know if that's gonna be the driver or other treatment, but, um, membranes give you that, um, the best available treatment technology.
How long has the membrane system been available?
Over twenty years. Um, so what we're seeing now is, if I can, I think your question's going.
Yeah.
Is that the membranes on this coast, it's, I think sales reps do a phenomenal job. On the west coast, it's all hollow fiber technology, on the east coast, it's a flat plate. They're, they're both really good technology, but the hollow fibers on this coast, Charlotte County just replaced theirs, uh, ten years. They did a, a third party evaluation and they said, you don't need to replace them. Um, but they did anyways, cause they pre-bought them. Benita Springs, which is a little farther south, um, they replaced theirs, cause they got the same, the same deal, but they had the same evaluation. Um, those same hollow fiber membranes are getting twelve to fifteen years of life. Um, and that's, and we're on the second generation of, of replacing that right now, so the technology's mature. Um, I'll say, I, I went to a plant, um, last year in Georgia and it was the worst treatment plant I've ever seen too. It's like, when stuff gets so rusted, it's almost like barely held together with the rust and the slime and all that. And it was a membrane plant and I asked the operator, you know, how often do you maintenance? This must be horrible, he's like, oh, nothing. It's, it's, it's mature enough where the cellophane valves don't break, the pumps don't break and it's just, it just, it just works, you know, automated where you talk, if you read, you know, re- papers, presentations or people maybe a little bit more gray hair than, than I had, I'm, don't do MBR, you know, it's, it's not gonna work. Well, that was, that was the first generation, whereas mature, where I'd say Sarasota County, I mean, say what you want about them also, but they're spending a lot of money, two hundred fifty million dollars, you know, top consultant, top all that and if the technology wasn't mature, I, you know, I'd say, you know, that's, you know.
What sort of replacement cost was it for us?
For this project?
Yes.
Yeah, we were estimating six hundred thousand and, and that's included as part of this, uh, project and it was included as part of our net present worth analysis.
And that went nearly double our MGD?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, that's, uh, the MBR, I mean, we were just going to two million gallons as part of this expansion, but that's something, that's another benefit to the MBR is actually with that existing tankage that's out there, you can get up to three million, three point five million, uh, with this technology while the others, you would need a lot more additional tankage. So I know we're using to show it here soon with the cost, it is the higher cost option right now to go to two million, but if you were to go to three million, four million, it's really the lowest cost option if you're looking for the future.
Plus you're looking at a forty, fifty, sixty year option rather than.
Sure, if we're looking at that, then.
Yeah.
The, yeah, I mean, there's, it's modular, so you, you can get more capacity how you do it, but the, the really big, the benefit of, of like right now is doubling the amount of microorganisms, so you don't have to build that extra tankage and that's why I'll talk about the cost, it makes it similar, similar cost here though, if you're not building concrete, you're converted to embr- uh, membrane. The other, the other negative though, you know, really the neg, the other part about it is where it says fine screens is with that membranes, they are, they are membranes and so you need, you just, you're doing headworks rehab, new headworks, it's even another tighter screen right there. And that's an additional cost right there of infrastructure, so there's a, not every, every city, not every county is going to MBR because there are disadvantages, but there are times where it looks like in this case, where it's, it's worth a really hard look at, cause you need the nutrient removal and then, you know, capacity as you need it, um, coming in.
Is there, uh, increased operay requirement under DEP rules for the MBRs of?
Arguably it's less, there's more automation, but I, I would say, I think from, from right now it's the same, just assume the same operators one, you could, you could, Benita Springs has sixteen operators, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a ridiculous kind of amount, but other places have less.
What about the membrane talk to the replacement, how much of a maintenance factor would that be?
Yeah, yeah, it depends, it depends on what, what style, the, the hollow fiber ones that are really on the west coast, is they pull them once a year, which it's a, it, it's an event where you have a crane, you pull them out and it's, uh, you get your glove, you have, you have to clean them and wash them down. Um, there's a, there's a clean once a week and then a once a quarter, so they're, the hollow fiber, but the benefits of that is it's a lower capital cost and a much smaller foot, it's a, it's a, it's a smaller footprint. The other type of membranes are a flat plate where they don't pull them, they're ten years, Town of Davie, um, Nassau JEA, they pull them once every five years, once every ten years. The membranes are meant to just sit in there, but they're more capital cost and they have a bigger footprint, you know, upfront.
With, um, as just a roughly as a factor, what do you think in addition to the activated sludge facility you have now as opposed to the MBR, how much more expense is it to run it, maintenance wise, ongoing maintenance, is it like one and a half time, two times?
I, I think maintenance wise, I would say it's probably about similar. Um, energy wise, like for operational cost, I'd say at least budgeting twenty percent more on, on cost, energy cost and, uh, chemical cost. Um, for maintenance cost, cause you don't have your clarifier, your, your filters on this, on this active, on the alternative one still need filtered, done maintenance, clarifiers are maintenance. Um, your additional process tanks that you're building has more mixers and pumps, so there's more components. And your membrane, you know, you gotta pull them, you know, either once a year, once every five years and that cleaning, I think those kinda even out, it's hard to, it's really site specific, but the energy with the air scour, um, is definitely the budget that we, we like to, you know, I can sit up here and say I wanna optimize it and, you know, get the energy dialed in, but, you know, you know, just at least twenty percent more for, for energy on that, um, but we try to minimize that. That all depends if staff's bought in though. If, if operations, and that's one of the reasons we took, um, you know, site visits to look at MBRs with staff, because it's also if, if there's no appetite for MBRs, it's definitely gonna be more maintenance. If, if it's just, I don't want this technology, this isn't gonna work, um, whi- which happens sometimes, then it's, it's not gonna work. But as, as operations and kind of as a culture of wanting that brought in, taking ownership of it, then, um, that's when I think maintenance is even less. Talk to Benita Springs chief over there, he's never gonna go back, if everything's automated, the guys just have to watch the process, it's, everything's dialed in, it's everything organized compared to, you know, other places, um, if you're not bought in. So alternative three is, it's not an MBR, it's still, it's still the conventional approach, but this takes advantage of converting, um, your oxidation ditches into diffused air. Uh, the benefits of this, I didn't really talk about it, your technology you have now is, is large rotors that, that whip the, the, um, the mix liquor, the, the microorganisms into the air and then oxygen gets on those droplets and gets back in. It's, it works, it's great, it's not the most efficient, but it's actually pretty efficient, especially how, how deep the tanks are, it's optimized for that. Diffused aeration is the, uh, fish tank, the, the, the bubbles that are coming up there. You have, now you have additional blowers and mechanical equipment, you have piping, but you have a lot tighter process control, you can really dial in, uh, for the nutrient removal, have different zones of, on, 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 on up air. So this is, this was an approach where it's, it's not the most advanced technology of MBR, but it's, uh, an upgrade from what you saw before. And then similar upgrades and then, another one is the tankage, the, the postinoxic tank gets at the top, that's still required to get your nutrient removal. So this is the one where the capital cost was, was similar to the MBR.
Don't they phase in diffused air, um, along with the can't blaring over a period of time before they replace the can't blaring of the diffused air generally?
Setting like a?
Well, rather than just doing away with the diffused air.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, um, um, can't blare is, use the diffused air slowly, add, add a few blowers at a time as opposed to all once?
You can, you can, like if it's a phased approach, like, like you need each aerator just to take that one aerator down and put a, put a grid in, um, you could do that. Or, or the one thing, I mean, I, I just saw is, uh, you can put even a blower on top of the, of the deck right there, you know, just so it's replacing just right there, you save building a blower building and there's ways to really do it economical.
The tanks are sufficiently, um, laid out to where the, the, that diffused air will give a proper roll?
It's, it's not ideal, it's not ideal and that's, that's one of, that's one of the drawbacks of this one, cause your twelve foot depth, you want, you want a deeper depth cause the little bubble, the longer it takes in there, the, the more oxygen gets transferred. Um, and then with the roll, instead of a roll, we do a, it's a, it's a tapered grid, so as it comes, we have the, the, a, a dense grid and a lesser one, then a lesser one. Um, so by the end of that less dense one, we start an un-aerated zone. So we're creating inside those, your existing ditch, different zones room nutrients than the postinoxic is, um, just to polish it.
Can we not simply add volume to our ditches by going vertical?
Yeah, we, we, we took a, we took a hard look at that, uh, lakeside, they, they were talking about that and that's just the, we had a lot of talk internally, our structural engineer and it's, it's an option, it's, it just, it just, we felt internally it's more of like a Band-Aid. Um, it just of the old existing concrete pouring to new concrete, our structural engineer was like, ah, it could be done, but the water stopped and, you know, how we raise it and then, um, and then you're looking at, okay, are we doing? um, and then you're looking at, okay, are we doing that for mechanical aeration or for diffused aeration?
Right.
And then we were like, is that gonna be one of the alternatives? We looked at, and that's why MBR was like, well, MBR, if we're gonna do that, why don't we just keep the same volumes and, and get our concentration up? The oth- the other, the other one is, if we raise the walls up, uh, we want that postinoxic zone. So when the treatment process is complete, that postinoxic zone is really gets our nitrogen all the way down, it's disconnected from the process. So if we raise the tank up, um, and that's, that's really kind of alternative four, is, this is the one where we don't have the new tankage, we're gonna do it all inside the tankage right there. The city of Lakeland, um, they, they changed their surface, uh, aerators to this style system.
What kind of MGD could we get to doing it that way?
Like, is that the two, my base two?
Uh, this one is still the two MGD. So alternative one, three and four, is what's shown there is for the two MGD. And all these really were for the two MGD, but it was just another benefit, that MBR, that alternative two option, we coordinated. And, I mean, when we looked into it and also coordinated with the manufacturers, they're like, you, in this volume, you can get up to three point five, four million gallons in this tankage. It was really just an extra benefit for alternative two.
And this is the one, I mean, this, so this is the one where everything's inside the tankage, and we have a, a software called BioWin that models it to look at it. And if you go into computer software, thi- this is great, it's gonna, it's gonna work, but it also, it's, it's a lot of operator tension, uh, attention, because as your, as your ammonia comes in throughout the day, it can fluctuate up and down. And this one considers that you're matching that ammonia demand when it comes in, which we can with instrumentation, and we change on the controls, and the blowers come in with that. But, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those where, just because the computer model says it does, and operator, you know, attention is required. And so when it's a regulatory requirement, this is the one that would, we wanna, you know, be careful about looking at.
I have one question, if you don't mind, is that, uh, one of my concerns is, uh, having sufficient labor, and, and finding the labor as well as the cost, as, as compared to, uh, having something more automated, than the training to get people to be able to, uh, actually be able to use a type of system. And you look at comparing that cost to others, because I know that right now, we have difficulty even finding employees to work out there. And of course, there's a cost of, of hiring more and so on and so forth. But then again, if you go to something more, uh, more automated, then what is the cost of trying to train people to, you know, look over that type of a system?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and that's, that's, yeah, that's the, that's the, that, that's the question, is, is like, I, I can bring, is like, so there, there's one point, is the, the younger generation grew up on computers and Nintendo, and automation is what I've seen, is kind of the thirties and, and younger, the, the young operators who are gonna be your future chiefs, want the automation, they, they, they kind of see that, and they, they don't really like putting the boots on and getting the sludge judge out, and you know, it's more, it's like the more, and, you know, especially, I mean, the, the chief operator, and it's a fifteen MGD plant, Cape Coral, I think he just turned thirty, I mean, he's just all over that right there, and I'm not saying you're gonna recruit him, but, you know, or, you have, you know, the other approach right here, is exactly what you're saying, is this technology is just, let's, it, it's been working for fifty years, it's gonna work for fifty years before. The, the twenty-two-year-old trainee who's gonna be your next chief, he trained under the sixty-year-old right there, and if ain't broke, don't fix it, like, just keep with the same right here, and then, and then maybe you look at, okay, let's, if we need capacity, let's, let's do vertical walls. And that's, that's, that, that is a hundred percent valid decision, and that's, you know, if, you know, you know, um, and it, and that's good, that's kind of the, the, the decision, is this one is, you know, it's, 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 um, working with Lakeside, they're, they're like, Fred Trippenzy and Todd Shaw there, Fred's been doing this for sixty years, I mean, it's, it's, it's that expertise where the company is American, and it's, it's gonna be here, I don't think they're gonna go anywhere, and working with them on your expansion and keeping it automation down, where you have kind of manual labor, of, you know, how you, you go out and, and operate it. And then you have alternative two, alternative two, which is, I mean, it's, it's more automation, I'd say, once operators learn about it, they usually, I've yet to ha- I, I have not met an operator who, who saw an MBR plant and really understood it, and then operates it, who wants to go back.
Right.
The automation is, it's pretty straightforward, especially, I'd say, the, the flat plate style, where you don't pull them every ten years, and the, the modules are kind of like linking logs, like Legos coming in, and the automation, and they, they're like, I don't wanna go back. And, like, you go to their laboratory, I ask them, like, what do you guys do? I go, anything I'll have, like, once a month, we'll get on the microscope, where the clarifier, um, you have to watch it every single day, like, how it settles, and if you have a process upset, I know talking, you know, like, with New Core, we're really, really concerned about process upsets, and I'm not saying MBR, you're not gonna have process upsets, but it's significantly more forgivable, because you have that membrane barrier.
How many people are available that are qualified to do the type of the system already out there? Is it something you have to just find somebody willing to train, or?
Like, I, I think, I think, stop, stop talking about Lake, last one on public record, but, like, I was talking to the operators, and he had an RO plant. He's like, I don't want an MBR because it's so much harder, an RO, RO plant, like, like, uh, RO is like, high pressure, these pressure vessels, it's significantly, um, less complicated, I think, than an RO plant. So I think with, um, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm excited, it's, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I mean, we took the operator, um, Henry Reed, you know, Jonathan was the operator at the time, and we went to the site visit, and they were both open to the technology, and they were open.
But I'm understanding you too, of saying it's not, I, I, I just, I don't anticipate, um, a big ramp up, it's, it's, it, that's why, I think, the BR, the bioreactor people, it's, it's a filter, I mean, that's, that's, uh, it's taken, instead of a clarifier, it's taken like a paper towel, and it's filtering all that, and all that sludge, just like now, it just gets brought back, and it replaces your clarifier and filter. And once that, it's like, oh, that's pretty straightforward, and then you have the probes, when the water gets dirty, the turbidity probe, you have an alarm, you can shut, then there's redundant basins, you shut one down, and you can kind of investigate which one, which one failed.
Let me ask you one more question, I'll be done, and, uh, uh, what options are, where are we compared to what Sebring is doing? Because they have upgraded your system, uh, a little sooner than we have?
I'm not familiar with, uh, Sebring's, uh, treatment plan.
Okay.
Sounds like an FBR. Yeah, I can't say sorry, can't, I'm not familiar with that.
I mean, and that is, I mean, so, it's, I agree, you know, on the west coast, there's MBRs, on the, on the east coast, there's MBRs, and we're also not, like, on the coast, so right there. So I think, I think, you know, considering that, of the, the pool, the recruitment pool, um, yeah, with somebody relocated.
And we'll, and we'll be able to get Rick Reed's opinion too. I know he's been at the Sebring plant a, a number of times, and he knows the operators.
But, but isn't that the same type of equipment that Fred Trippeney's, uh, basically sells?
Yeah, Fred, Fred does the Lakeside.
Okay.
Fred does that one, which, um, yeah, I mean, Fred, Fred's taught me a lot, and I think, I think, alternative one is, is trying true.
Okay.
And you have, you have the support, I mean, it's absolutely right there, it's just the, it's limiting, it's, you're building more tankage, which is just more infrastructure, which isn't a bad thing, but it's also, you're just building more infrastructure as opposed to doubling the concentration of your microorganisms, you keep that the same.
Okay.
Um, clarifiers have been working for over a hundred years, I mean, there's, I mean, it's, it's the, the clarifier technology, you're adding more filters, which filters, cloth filters, there, there, almost, uh, every treatment plant, you know, all over has those right there.
If you were to, if you were to build a two MGD plant from scratch, what would, what system would you use?
I'd put a, uh, a five-stage oxidation ditch in, so it'd be, it'd be, it'd be an oxidation ditch, look, with you guys, it'd be an oxidation ditch, and then, point, you guys could see, it would be, instead of the tankage, and that's, that's one of the negatives about this, is you have a tank up here, and you have stuff up here, is today would be oxidation ditch, and then after here would be your postinoxic, and then right here would be your, your, your pre-inoxic, and your anaerobic, so it would all be right here, so then you have mixer and aerator, and then right after that, you have the clarifiers, the above ground right here, and then, and then you filters. And that's, that's, we're, we have a job right now for, in North Florida, it's exactly what we're doing. I, I did the same MBR, and the guy's like, nope, just, to do that, and that's, it works, it's great, I, I take a, you have horizontal rotors. Um, another company, Ovivo and Westec make a vertical shaft one, but, I mean, if you already, I mean, that's, that's, that's the big difference.
And that's a two MGD that you're doing?
Oh, yeah, two MGD expandable four, so we take that, and then we just kind of mirror it right there.
And what was the, uh, cost of that build?
A lot of money. It's over, it was over a hundred million. Um, but that, but that, that include, there, there's a lot of off-site stuff, and that was also, uh, it's a, it's a C Mar project right there, um, that one is, um, yeah, it's, it's development-funded, that, and they have money to spend on that. You can definitely do it less, but not much. I mean, what we're seeing right now is, I mean, it's thirty-five dollars a gallon, uh, which is a lot, and we're not really seeing twelve now, but between, you know, fifteen and, you know, twenty-five.
So then all these options, uh, for future growth, we're pretty much guaranteeing that we're gonna have to just expand our current plant, we're not gonna be building a new one anytime soon.
Which is, and, and the, the, the benefits, the disadvantages of MBR is you're, you're changing technology. I mean, it's, if you're changing technology, you, there's not all your neighbors are doing this, you're gonna be one of the first ones, you know, the other, there's coast that have that.
Sure.
But then the benefits is, you kind of have your own ticket for capacity to expansion, because it's, your concentration is twenty-five hundred now, you can get it up to twelve thousand, and that's, and it really is, you get more capacity treatment.
As long as you can get the flow to the plant.
Yeah, yeah, that's a whole nother discussion, septic to sewer and like, whatever, but, and that's what I said, it too, if, 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 I mean, with, with a lot of the population projections, if it's not anticipated to need three MGD for the next forty years, um, it's also consideration. Um, it's not ideal, but, I mean, you also could, uh, you know, do, you know, alternative one and then MBR later, you know, usually it's, you know, you're spending more money that way. But the bene- other benefits of MBRs, it's, it's the, jump a little bit ahead, is, um, there's a non-economic, it's kind of hard to see this, but, it's impossible to see this, but we, we went through internally, and then with your staff, of looking at the, the non-economic, what's the, you know, the public perception? You know, it's, it's the best available treatment, MBR, um, the existing technology, you know, has good public perception, but it's also not, you know, the best, um, the, the best affluent. Um, the risk, the regulatory, you know, what do we think is gonna address future, um, regulations, you know, MBR scored much better than nutritional technology. Um, operation and maintenance, we, we scored that, we got the oxidation ditch, and that technology, you know, scored well with that, because it's tried and true, you know what the maintenance is. Uh, MBR and the lifecycle cost, it's, it's more energy, the membrane replacement, we gotta, we consider ten years replacing the membranes, if you think we can get more, and so that really, you know, hurt the membrane on the, I'll go back up on, oops. Sorry. Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, what is it here? Oh, yeah, can't even, there we go, I got it, there we go.
We're just gonna have to pen on a recruiting.
Yeah, so this is the one where, I mean, look at the lifecycle cost, so, and MBR is the most, I mean, it's, it's the, the highest, highest capital cost, the highest O and M cost. It's kind of this, you know, we're in the same ballpark, fourteen million to seventeen million, uh, these are, you know, budget, budgetary numbers. Alternative number one, fourteen point four million, alternative two, seventeen point one, and then the other three, all, three and four, fifteen and fifteen million. These are budgetary numbers, things are, things are kind of changing constantly, but these are, you know, rough, rough orders of magnitude of, of that, and so.
So, just roughly, how much more expensive would it be to take option two from the two to the four MGD?
Well, yeah, not, I don't know if we actually broke that down. We did look at, yeah, what the cost may be going to three MGD, I don't have that number offhand, but.
But obviously, it's gonna be, it's gonna be far lower than the other three options.
Correct. If you're looking for, at anything greater than the two million gallons per day, um, you're gonna get a, a large savings with alternative two, because you don't have to add all that tankage. If you go anything above two million gallons per day, you're looking at, you know, you have two ditches now, those two large concrete tanks, you're gonna have to add another two of them down in the south, that green area down there, you're gonna have to add a lot of tankage, you're gonna have to add two more clarifiers. Uh, with the MBR option, you wouldn't have to do that.
Sure.
But how many, how many do you think we're adding for two million gallons of, I mean, that, realistically, if, if we do have, uh, another two million gallons come in, or a capacity fees if the property set, which is a nurse discussion we'll have, um, that, that, that should pay for, you know, additional tankage, I would think.
Yeah, it's, then it's, it's the other question of, um, the, the, the plant's designed, besides the RASWAS pump station being below grade, the, the plant was designed for this type of build-out right here, and then expanding it more without building, like, mirroring a completely brand-new plant right here, it gets really difficult to add more, more tankage, um, just where, where it's constrained. And then, if you just build a second plant, um, you're gonna have a lot more staffing, like the city of Lakeland, uh, than their north side plant, is that right there, where they have, they have two and two, and it's two different mix liquors, they don't blend together. So they have to actually operate two different biologies back and forth, which just, just adds the complexity. I mean, it's just, it, it could be done, you know, with that, it's just, there's, there's difficulty with it, um, in the future. Whether MBR, um, I mean, you could rerate it, you know, three, four, pretty, pretty easily. That being said, your point, I mean, that's, that's, that's a situation later, of just building another plant right there, doing a splitter box and everything.
And if you go back to the cost real quick, now this was for going to that two million gallons per day.
Right.
Uh, right now, really, the city just has to do the phase one improvements, to me, the nitrogen and the phosphorus limits. And when we were looking at it earlier, really, alternative one was about, alternative one, two, and three were all similar for phase one. It wasn't, you know, this is shown thirteen to fifteen, the phase one was closer to ten million for both alternative one and two. So that's really the cost that the city would be looking at, you know, spending now, with that ten million.
Let's say just to end, it's, and you can't see, so we did a, a non-economic and economic, uh, analysis, uh, when considering we had sixty percent non-economic on the scoring, forty percent economic, alternative number two was selected, when we did fifty percent economic, fifty percent non-economic in that criteria, um, alternative two was selected, and then when we did forty percent non-economic, sixty percent economic, and then thirty and seventy, alternative number one was selected. Which, that's really just saying is, when the non-economic of the, the better affluent quality, the ability to expand, and then the future is considered, compared to the other one, that's a non-economic, the alternative two, that, the, the newer technology makes sense, when, um, the economic is more highly favored, um, and you're not considering the non-economic, then it makes sense to the alternative one.
Okay. All right, do we have any, uh, any questions? Is that all the presentation that you have?
I think it is, yeah, I was just running away.
Lights came on, I was like, ah!
I was just doing it in the dark, talking to myself, talking to a bunch of strangers.
Only one question I have, is then, all these options would keep us from building another large treatment plant, we would just build on existing one we have now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And to be clear, uh, two MGD, in your opinion, gets us twenty years, at least?
Two MGD, yes, that is correct. Uh, like we were showing those population projections, we were, um, yeah, under the two MGD still. And I was using a higher growth rate, so, so it appears you would get at least two, you know, twenty years.
Okay.
So I think it goes to your point too, I mean, development comes in, you get MGD of, of, of development, there's gonna be a significant amount of capacity charges right there, you know.
The most capacity, capacity you could possibly set.
Sure.
As backed off, the capacity fee is recommended.
And, and the funds are not diluted into other funds?
Uh, they can't be.
They can't be, or they shouldn't be?
It's unlawful.
Shouldn't have.
Good point. Okay?
And I know you're wrong with me, it's unlawful.
Not me, it's more my time. All right, uh, any more questions for Kim Lee Horn on this?
No.
So, um, as you said, all of these things are very expensive. Uh, so the reality is that we would have to have a great deal of grants to actually fund, um, pretty much any of the major projects. There's a handful of the small ones, um, that we could probably take care of in the next couple of years on our own, but we gotta find grants for the rest of it. So, that's not really a question, obviously, for you guys, because you guys aren't really handling much of anything with grants, other than helping us write these grants, but do we have any kind of, um, hope of getting a grant for any of these big plants?
There is a good hope for, especially on the treatment plant side of things, um, I was just talking to somebody on, on, on our way here, I think it was Bay Laurel, they're getting, um, like, over twenty million dollars of grant money, so there, and there's another cycle coming out, coming up here, where they're asking for, you know, like, another twenty-some million dollars for their treatment plant. I don't know the details, but there, there is a grant out there that's, uh, for like, the reducing the nutrients and going to advanced wastewater treatment plant. And actually, like, like Placid, they, they got, they got a forty million dollar grant for septic to sewer and for, to go to advanced wastewater treatment plant. So there's grant opportunities that are out or coming out, uh, for that type of project, at least for the treatment plant.
Are those typically for cities who are already at like a critical level, where it's gonna cause an environmental catastrophe, or is it?
Didn't like Placid have to go there, they, they, they had to put in sewer, right? I mean, that's basically why they got that big grant. Wasn't like here in the city, everybody was on septic. But from what I understand, that's what, why they were the ones got the grant, because they had, they were basically mandated to get sewer lines.
They have a huge number of, of, well, pro- properties on the lakes over there, and that, the septic systems that, you know, are just, they just destroy a lake, destroy it.
But, uh, on the question you asked about grants, Jamison has been great. But, and the question you asked about grants, Jamison has been great for any grant he sends, comes out, he's sending our way to take a look at, so. He's hoping to get some of the work out of it, but, you know, I knew that the first time, but, I tell him, he's, he's, he's Kim Lee Horn salesman, he's a good one, but he, he does great work for the city, whether you get paid or not, so.
But we'll definitely go back and look and let you know of any grant opportunities for any of these projects.
What about for some of the, uh, the larger water expansions, you know, if we wanna, we obviously, our main goal is to go to Avon Park Lakes, because the homes already exist, it's already a guaranteed customer base, but it costs too much money for us to put all those lines out there. So realistically, is there any grants available for doing something like that?
I'm not as familiar on the water side of grants, so I can't speak to that. I know if it was on the other side of things, like wastewater, there's a lot of septic to sewer type permits out there, and, and everybody knows about the SRF, but unfortunately, the city typically, it's all loan money.
You'd be in a ready county, um, in a, in a ready county, you might be able to get pharmaceuticals for water, um, but that usually comes part grant and part loan, but, um, uh, usually the grants are pretty generous in a ready county.
These are the ones who are transforming well properties to city water properties? Is that typically what they're doing?
I don't know about that. I just know that, um, other cities I represent and ready counties, um, they're, they're, they're pretty generous with them.
Okay. All right, um, kind of unrelated question is on our septic hauling. Uh, is there any benefit to potentially hauling the septic ourselves, or having in-house hauling, is there any savings there?
You're talking about the sledge, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The septic is something different.
Or you mean the cake hauling? Sorry, the cake.
Yeah, cake hauling.
You meant like, uh, like, like doing your own hauling?
I noticed that we're spending, okay.
Probably not, you get a bit bigger, I mean, you can do an economic analysis, we can totally.
And then I know that some of the, uh, large cities out there, you know, they actually process their own cake and all that. I mean, what size of a city benefits from that sort of thing? Is this something you have to be, you know, a million plus to, to benefit from?
Well, you, you think, you think enough now, so it's, 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 it's good material right now, and, I mean, the next step would be, if you had, you know, your own trucks and your own disposal, but with that, it depends on your rate. I mean, if you share that, what your hauling rate is right now, we can take a quick look at that, but it probably doesn't make sense.
Because I know originally, you know, they used to just take this and dump it in the groves, right? And then DEP said, well, you can't do that, so, they would use it as fertilizer.
A lot of times you have to further treat, I think, uh, class A, class double, there's different classes of type, and I think you just operate the class B.
And you don't have to do anything, so there's the residual management facilities, so, they, it's their, it's their, once they take it, it's their responsibility and ownership of it.
It's more or less looking at it from a enterprise standpoint of, uh, now we can get the business from the surrounding towns, combine it together, and make something that
A lot, a lot of places have tried doing that, I think it's just getting the right, the right place at the right time.
I see.
Hain City's one kind of fell through, and Fort Orange is looking at it too, and Lee County had one for a while, so. I'd say as long, as long as you're not, like, Ross Group had a horrible hauling, actually, the, the Evolution did, the industrial user there, they had just a horrible hauling rate, and hauler actually got in trouble, DP, and like, the rate just doubled. So I think if it is in that situation, and it starts, you know, you get a new hauler, or if you're limited, which I don't think you are geographically, then it makes sense to control your own destiny.
I see.
But again, that is why we recommended that large holding tank, so that you get a lot, a large amount of reduction in your solids.
Roughly a thirty percent?
Because the hauling rate's gonna continue to go up, but if you reduce the solids that you haul, it'll be a lot more.
Okay.
I think the looping is a great thing, getting rid of two inches is a great thing, but, you know, if you're, some of the larger pipes, water, you know, we could maybe look at, uh, at us at the, um, uh, repump station, but also for isolate areas, maybe, uh, inline boosters, and why, why using ancient technology here?
No.
Okay.
No, that's something we can, especially that one improvement, I think it, it could make sense out at the very end of the south end, that's something we can look at, instead of upside moving from an eight to a twelve at the south end, where you're not looking to maybe expand further south. Well, I know it was mentioned, a possible interconnect, uh, but they haven't talked to us about it yet, and, uh, we have, and we have approached the, uh, Sebring. Well, yeah, when you're starting reaching the northern part, or your south, you know, south, the southern end of the city, I think it is worth looking at, you know, putting in a, inline booster station, but it would add more maintenance operation at the time.
Okay. So ultimately, uh, you know, a lot of times you can't get a grant if you don't have something in your CIP, um, so it's probably more beneficial to stuff your CIP, even if you don't realistically think that you'll complete those projects.
Right.
So, you know, having said that, I don't know what the staff needs from us to quote-unquote "stuff" this, uh, CIP with some of these projects, um, but we definitely wanna hear back from Rick Reed, you know, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, um, so we definitely wanna get his opinion on some of these projects. Um, my opinion would be to stuff as much as that we can, and then one other component to this was to, part of getting the master plan for the water was to, uh, help us understand which customers that we can actually serve whenever they request water from us. So we had a moratorium in place, uh, to stop the water connections until we understood where our water system was. So, is that something that's gonna be coming from Kim Lee Horn, or would that be coming more from Rick as to who we can connect to and who we can't?
That's, that's actually something I talked to Rick earlier about, and, um, I'm gonna, when he's back, hopefully tomorrow, next day, I want him to get with Jamison on it, because I have the same question. He's got the idea that, you know, we, we get this, then we're gonna go to the post, and they're gonna engineer it, and we're gonna go up this way, turn, come down this way, but that all sounds good, but we do have people that are dying for water out there, and we can't just run it here, here, and here, but we know the whole street wants water. If the line up to there is adequate now, we don't have to put in, you know, because, you know, I was looking, it looks like, uh, one of them, like, a lot of six inch, but there's a ton of two inch, I got the road that tees into my road, the two inch down, if they put in, nobody's even on it. But a city employee used to live on the street, no, I'm just saying, just saying, who sold it, I'm just saying.
We won't go there.
We won't go there. But that, that's, that's a question, I mean, we got people just begging for it, because these wells are making them go three hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Deep at thirty thousand dollars. I think they'd rather pay the capacity fees, Jerry, that even the, the other ones you wanted us to go with, no business will come in the, but, but, yeah, that's a question. I got Rick earlier, Mayor, I wanna get with them to see if it's plausible to do that.
And we also don't want to, you know, tie our hands with these new developments that are coming in.
Right. I know I keep ringing the bell, but I, I just don't think you're, you're gonna have enough grants out there, um, if you don't put such your capacity fees at where they need to be, or to be compensated for the capacity you're building.
Okay. All right, um, anything else that we can think of that we need to accomplish here tonight?
Did you need anything more? No, I, I just know on the treatment plant, uh, and I didn't mention this, but that project was SRF-funded, state revolving funds, and, uh, there is a deadline on that, so we, we have to come up with a selection, uh, you know, as part of that plan. Let's say, like, I would shoot for about the end of the month, we need a, have a recommendation on the alternative.
I, I think that's perfectly acceptable. So we should be able to get you, you're basically looking for us to, uh, select one of the four options or a variant of that?
Correct.
Yep.
And the document you have, they're gonna use for like, grant funding, because selections from a, from a, especially the, the nature removal side, it opens up grants, and a grant per company is always here, every time we get a nature removal project, we get grants.
Okay.
And they wanna see a facility plan that you develop alternatives, so select alternatives, public record, and then that document's gonna be supportive for the grant.
Okay.
So, would that, so it's need by the end of the month, and that's next week's meeting?
Do you think that we can have Rick review these options and give us his opinion?
Yeah, I don't know if Rick's probably already talked you about some, has he talked you about the options?
Yeah, we, we talked about the options, and I think him and the operators, I mean, they're, they're really open to, I mean, we, when we did the analysis and the evaluation,